Ready. Okay.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather as council and administration this evening, and we're grateful for the responsibilities that have been placed upon us to govern the affairs of this town, and we pray that we'll be able to make the proper decisions that will help with the welfare and well-being of this community, that we'll have in our hearts and minds, the desire to help this area prosper and to grow, and pray for the interest of Thy Spirit to be with us tonight as we deliberate upon these things, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you. Counselors, I hope you're having a fairly decent summer, for some very busy still, for some ready to wind down a little bit, hopefully.
When do we do that?
When you try to escape for a few days. Anyway, we're calling the meeting to order. It's the thirteenth day of August. This is our regular town council meeting. We are grateful for the media. Corey McCarthy, for his presence here today, thank you. We have delegations that will be coming shortly, we imagine, so we're going to go ahead and adopt the agenda as given.
I move to adopt the agenda as it is written. I didn't hear any additions, or anything, so.
All right. Questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. We now will go to the adoption of the meeting, of the regular meeting of council from July 9th, 2019. Counselor Bengey?
Motion to accept the minutes of the council meeting, July 9th, 2019.
All right. Any question regarding those minutes? I read them and felt them correct. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right. We now go into, go to section six. Maybe we'll leave six A altogether aside until we have Mr. Dick. We will do that whole section together. So, six B is a bylaw, 1686, a borrowing bylaw, solar farm. Jeff is going to give us some update, and there are quite a few of them, and will help you understand why of the changes in the amount that were given originally. That is going to be good for Jeff to clarify.
Okay. Let me make sure I got everything here. That seems really loud.
I can hear you now.
Yeah, okay. So, the borrowing bylaw, there in your background, there were some red lines of things we changed since the public hearing. The changes came from a couple of things. One is, oh, hey, guys. In the original amount, we had the cost for us to develop a road down to the lots for the solar farm. We removed that, and the reason we removed it is that MCCAC, the grantor, said they would not include the road costs in their grant funding. And so, when I talked with Brandon, we've decided for now, we're just going to build a, there's a primitive road, be able to access the site to do the construction, but not go through building the whole road bed, building the whole road base right now. But we'll get it, we'll get it surveyed, and we'll get all that set up. So, we took the cost of the road out of being financed by NMAX, but the cost for extending the electrical infrastructure, so the lines and the transformer are still in there, and the cost for fencing is still in there. The other thing we decided to do was, we were trying to understand how we should manage the GST. And so, we've, essentially, what we've done is taken the GST out of any financed amounts. We're going to pay 100% of the GST upfront as part of our down payment, because we think we can get it back before the end of the fiscal year. Depending on the timing of this bylaw, of course, but if it passes and we spend this, we think we can get it back for this fiscal, so it'll have no effect on the budget. And that way, we don't have to amortize GST over 15 years. And that, we had to make a little change to the grant. We were a touch optimistic in what we thought they'd give us at first. They've clawed us back a little bit based on what they think are approved expenses and those kind of things. So, what it frankly did is it almost netted out the amount the same. What we were planning on borrowing is almost the same. And one caveat is, we don't know the exact grant amount for sure, because they won't process phase two of it until we have an agreement signed with NMAX. So, that may tweak, and we may have to do an amendment to the bylaw at that time.
That's that 1.8...
Yeah, 1.088 million. Yeah. So, that's what we're thinking, as close as we think it might be right now. But until, we can't proceed with phase two until we have a signed contract, is what they're telling us. But they're telling us that that money is earmarked for us.
Okay.
I just ask a question. We were, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We were talking about doing a 20-year...
Correct.
And it's 15 now.
And it looks like it's 15. Does that change the net zero?
No, and I want to speak to that a little bit, too. And I have a sheet that's kind of a bunch of scribbles that I didn't photocopy and give to you, because it needs some interpretation. But we've been working a lot, as you know, with the regulation and also the financial piece. And what we found is, as we've navigated the regulatory piece, we're finding that we probably will realize some savings with Fortis and for the charges that we're getting on our distribution from them, which is enabling us to go to 15 years and still be at a net zero for the finance, for the payments and financing. So, NMAX is projecting $259,000 annually in revenue generation plus cost savings. And this has an annual payment of $231,000. So, we have a touch of cushion in there as well.
So, we kind of talked before about this, thinking that it was net zero, but we'd also be able to sell some back and make a little bit of money. That's still...
So, on, because we're a large-scale, this would be, I keep, I talk like it's done, and it's certainly not done. Because it is going to be a large-scale micro-gen project, we are selling back to the pool. And the projections from NMAX are showing that $259,000 annually in projected revenue. Now, that number, and I want to talk about some other evaluations, is used for the basis of internal rate of return, net present value, return on investment, but it's an estimate. And we have to go into this, if we do, we have to go into that, this acknowledging that it's an estimate. But talking with Kevin Phillips and talking with NMAX, NMAX probably is one of the better, they probably have the best handle on estimating the power pool over time, because they're one of the biggest futures buyers in the province, right? So, they're buying long-term energy contracts right now, and have some indication of what that's going to look like. So, Kevin has a reasonable level of confidence in their projections, even though they are estimates. We don't have a benchmark. We're so unique that, no, they're not doing another project with a municipality that owns their distribution. So, these distribution savings and these distribution charge impacts, they're not dealing with those anywhere else. So, we're a little bit unique in there. When I was talking to Kevin Phillips last Friday, I said, "Look, Kev, after everything we've looked at, you..." He sends me these really detailed analysis, but at the end of it, I don't know where his position is on it. You know, I get through it all, and I'm like, "I don't know if you like it or not." His position is that if council is okay to borrow that amount, that we should do it, because he feels it will play strategically in the future on how we manage our distribution system as well. So, his position is, this isn't reflected anywhere on our analysis, but the price of storage is coming down drastically and dramatically. And I'm not in this industry, so I'm just going on what he's telling me. And he says, "If you can start to produce and store, maybe 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, then you can start to manage your peak demand as a community, and then you can really start to manage and get some savings from your distribution charges. That's when you can really start to save, when you can store and release electricity at strategic times." And so, he's saying, "It seems to make sense mathematically on the current estimates, but it may have some interesting benefits going forward that you'd be positioned well to exploit." So, I'll give you just some of the numbers on it, and again, they're all based on that revenue estimate. So, we looked at three, I looked at three numbers. So, return on investment frankly is a pretty straightforward one, total revenue generated by the project divided by the capital cost. So, that's a significant positive in this equation. It's over a 200% ROI, because we envision this to last at least 35 years at $259,000 a year. So, 15 years were paid off, and we've got 20 years of $250,000 a year. So, that's a simple one. But the other ones you want to look at is, is you want to consider your time value of money, so you do net present value calculations and internal rate of return calculations, which look at the time value of money, and you have a discount rate on your money over time, because it's worth less, a dollar today is worth less in 15, 20 years, right? So, the internal rate of return percentage on it is 4.9%, which I think is quite acceptable. And the net present value calculation shows a positive net present value of 2 million, which really, net present values are kind of a go-no-go, so it's a positive net present value, so it seems mathematically to be a good investment, is what it would tell you. Don't get too worked up about the exact number of it. It's just you want to see positive. I did look at it if we didn't have the grant. It actually makes your internal rate of return negative without the grant, given the time value of money. I still think it would make sense for us. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we haven't talked about this in quite a while, was that renewable power center proposal we had of generating more within our municipality. This doesn't do that, but it gets us that much closer. Like, it's moving us, because the regulation is going to allow us to do this, how we're proposing it, we're actually a little bit closer to fulfilling that renewable power center goal than we were before. And if we're going to be trying to still change the regulation to accommodate us, we can be coming from a point of being closer to what we want than we were before. So, there is some political, kind of political benefit to it as well, if we pursue this down the road. And that's where Kevin's coming from. He thinks the math makes sense. He's a little more conservative in his numbers, but still showing positive. But his numbers, he would suggest, are a little more conservative. But he sees it as a good move to exploit renewable energy in the future for a town that owns a distribution system. He thinks it may position us quite well, as we continue to lobby for different regulations. So, there's a political side that looks positive, the financial side looks positive, but we all know this is a huge number, right? It's a great big number. But everything indicates that it would be a positive investment for us, based on the numbers we have.
Counselor Bengey?
Jeff, if you recall the conversation we had when we did our first project, we had very similar feelings.
Yeah.
Right.
And we were thinking the same thing. This is a big project, and it's an estimate. The estimate has proven out that it's working for us.
It works, yeah.
And NMAX was the person, or the entity that we worked with, and working with them, again, I have no problem feeling positive about this, as you do, and Kevin does. I'm good with that.
They've done it for many municipalities now. We're not the first.
Yeah.
In fact, I've done quite a few.
So, when we get closer to the project happening, is there, can we do an information sheet for the general public? I've just had some conversations with a few people that have come in to our business and talked about this specific project.
Okay.
And they, they have some misunderstanding about the project, and I tried my best to explain that we think that it's pretty much net zero, and we will probably be able to sell some of that energy back and make a little bit of money.
Yeah.
And in the long run, once we're paid off, you know, money will go into our coffers at 200 and whatever, thousands of dollars, right? So, I'm just wondering if when we get closer, we can kind of do a fact sheet, or, you know, just to let people know that this is kind of what we're doing, so they have an understanding, because there's just a little bit of misunderstanding out there, from what I've talked to people.
Counselor Drew, to address that very problem that you're encountering, when we had the first two projects done, the, it was Terra Alta.
Terra Alta, the installer, yeah.
And we did a press release, and it was not only just a press release, it was a fact release as to what the project represented and how it would benefit the community. And it was well-done, and it was very informative for whoever was there, and at a level where they could understand. So, my point of view, if something similar could have happened, that is about what I think would be, in layman's term, something that people could understand, so complex.
Yeah, and I have figures in my head. I just, some days, I'm not sure if I have them right, but I just, you know, once we get to that point, we can have solid facts and numbers and things.
I also think it needs to be put in perspective as to what $250,000 return represent in term of tax money that we could get from businesses, for example. What is it that we are garnering from the business community, and what does it equate to in comparison? Because honestly, that is a chunk of money.
Yes.
For a community that has so hard time getting businesses and large businesses to come, that is an option for revenue generation. Counselor Bengey?
Jeff, when we first proposed a solar field, because we were our own distribution, nobody touched us. What, you know, they were very skeptical on it. But they really wouldn't want to have anything to do with us. What's changed their attitude?
So, the legislation has changed since that time. So, the micro-gen regulation allowing projects up to five megawatts has changed. So, when we first started talking about that, that wasn't an option.
It didn't exist.
And the regulatory scheme was frightening. It wasn't so much they were scared, I was scared.
Yeah.
The regulatory scheme was really difficult. There's also a distributed generation regulation, which this project could also fit under, but again, I'm not looking to be a commercial generator. And so, it's just so happened that the regulation has come around where this fits in kind of a nifty pocket, that it seems to have some benefit for us from a regulation point of view.
If you remember in the past, you had to have all your panel attached to the structure.
Right.
And then, the regulation changed. When the regulation changed, about two years after our project was done, it opened a new opportunity for us in our town to have a solar farm that was not attached directly to a specific building.
Along with that, Jeff, how is our present project doing? Is it still online?
Well, technically, sometimes it's actually not reading, and it's offline, it's still generating, but the communications, we've had some issues, but it's still generating. I think everything's still fine. Yeah, it seems to be ticking along. Terra Alta, if I'm not mistaken, I saw them in town just, were they fixing that last inverter last week?
Problem apparently wasn't with the inverter.
Oh, okay.
It was with the wiring.
Okay.
Terra Alta has a new electrician who has a higher standard.
Okay.
So, he was checking all the connections, and they're going through each panel one at a time.
Oh, one thing I should mention to that, though, Counselor. So, on these projects, we have a significant performance warranty. And what we negotiated, and I really, sorry, I forgot to mention that, what we negotiated in this is, if we went to 15 years, Terra Alta and NMAX would warrant the performance, and basically, your bumper-to-bumper, to use a car analogy, of the system for the entire financing term. If we did it at 20 years, they did not do that. It was too, it was too long for them. They weren't willing to push their risk out that far. So, this one includes a fairly robust warranty on the performance of the system for the full financing term. And now, after that, that goes away, but we should be pretty up to speed on how this thing works by then. The other thing, and this is not settled by any means, but when I went to Calgary and met with NMAX, I asked them if they would be interested in training our guys on the maintenance of solar panels, because we know the warranty periods are going to expire. And it would be great if our linemen could be trained to do that in-house and to do that work on solar. So, I actually threw out the idea of the town of Cardston being the regional service contact point for all their jobs in the south, and to see if that's some work we could take on. So, we're going to continue to have a few more conversations about that, and see what we can do for training in-house as well.
So, with that in mind, then we enlarge our electrical division, and we would have to bring a lot more electricians into the system.
If it made sense. If they're going to throw us $20,000 a year worth of warranty work, it doesn't make sense, right? We try and make it work with what we have. But I don't know where that's going yet, Counselor. It's very preliminary.
All right. So, here you have the presentation regarding the borrowing bylaw, the changes to it, the rationale behind it. So, it is time for us to consider further reading to that bylaw, unless you have further questions.
Can I just...
Counselor Court?
This kind of money makes me nervous. New government coming in, I'm not so sure how much you're going to support all of this stuff down the road. That all makes me a little bit gun-shy.
All right. So, if you can have a little bit of safety, security there, whatever grants were given...
We have them, I understand that.
By the past government, the money is there, has been reserved, is in the treasury.
I understand that.
So, in other words, there is no extra money that we need to borrow afterwards. That's the project.
I think, though, Mayor, there may be some concern about regulatory change, five, 10, 15 years down the road.
Okay. This is for sure.
I don't know how to mitigate that concern for you, Counselor. I don't know how.
Yeah.
Jeff, so just, we have a 15-year period where we're paying this off.
Yeah.
I assume the warranty's going to be 15 years as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, after that 15 years, we're pulling in $200,000 a year.
Fifty-six.
Maybe a panel goes down. How much is a panel going to cost? Like, is it going to be in that $250,000 range to fix if we don't have a warranty on it? Like, I maybe...
So, I'll clarify, there's two warranties. There's an operations and maintenance warranty for 15 years. We have an output warranty for 30, I believe. So, they're guaranteeing that they will perform to a specified amount for 30 years on that.
Is that a warranty that we have on it?
Yes, it is.
And so, if anything falls off a screw or whatever, it's covered?
Well, not a, so that's probably a little more detailed for the 15.
Okay.
But yeah, if we all of a sudden have a whole bunch of panels that are putting out 25% after 15 years, that's warranted, because they have to be producing at a certain percentage of their new for 30. But as far as coming out and fixing the wiring that was not good or something, that expires after 15.
Okay. The panels themselves are good.
In other words, we need to have a system of maintenance, right? So, therefore, the in-house system of maintenance.
The profit that we're going to be making in the 16th year, I don't want that to go towards...
Yeah.
Paying for things that are falling apart.
I'd be super disappointed if we had a quarter million dollars in operations and maintenance annually after 15 years.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's a huge problem.
And that's just one of my concerns, because I don't understand the business that much from solar-wise, so.
Are these fairly rugged panels? Are they going to be able to handle this weather, the hail we may get and all that kind of?
Yeah, our insurer will insure them.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we had that discussion with them when we did these two buildings. We wanted to make sure that if we get another 2012 hail...
Yeah.
And our insurer said they're confident, they're, it's under our insurance now.
Okay.
So, that's okay.
All right. So, we had done a first reading of that bylaw. Now, we have the revision.
So, Mayor, if you wish to proceed, we would need a motion to accept the amendments...
Yes.
And then, further readings.
Yes. All right. So, counsel?
I move to accept the amendments for the, prior to the second reading.
To bylaw 1686, borrowing bylaw, solar farm.
Yep.
All right. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Now, we need to go to second reading. Counselor Drew?
Second reading on bylaw 1686, the borrowing bylaw for solar farm.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. I need a third motion. Counselor Seth?
Here you go. Third reading of bylaw 1686, borrowing bylaw, solar farm.
All right. Questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you very much. Counsel, it's a big, big adventure. I would agree with you, but if we don't kind of move forward where we have an opportunity to make money, we'll never accomplish much.
Just explain the process now. So, what'll happen is to, well, it might not be tomorrow, but NMAX is redrafting their contract with the new numbers, and the MCCAC grant won't process phase two until we have a signed agreement with NMAX. But NMAX's agreement is still contingent on the grant funding. So, if something goes sideways in the grant funding, that would be less than what the borrowing bylaw said it should be...
It would stop the process.
Then it's going to pause things again. We're going to have to have a sober second look at this.
Okay.
I'm optimistic it's going to be okay. I'm optimistic we might be able to push MCCAC a little. And the reason I say that is, they have a cap that a municipality is eligible for over the life of the program, and then they have a number, a percentage of how many watts you're producing that they'll make. I'm trying to push to get the total amount we're still eligible for, even though it's a little bit in excess of the price per watt they're subsidizing, but we're going to work on that, and NMAX is helping us work on that. So, there still is a couple of pieces here. The other thing I was going to ask, and I think this is okay according to our purchasing policy, but I'm going to enter into contract with NMAX based on the fact you approved the borrowing bylaw. So, I'm not going to bring that to you for ratification. Otherwise, we're going to do it the second week of September, a month from now.
Yeah.
So...
Are you comfortable with that, Counselors?
I know it's a big number. We haven't ever dealt with this number before. So, I'm just throwing that out there, but, so I'll let you know how that goes, and I'll keep you posted. Hopefully, a month from now, if everything goes well, we know we got 1.1 million in a grant coming. And NMAX is ready to go ASAP, as soon as the grant's approved. They're prepared to start. In fact, they came out last week and did some geotechnical, that I told them if we didn't sign the contract, we weren't paying for. But they, they were willing to do that. They were willing to roll those dice, because they want to be ready to go. So, they'll be pleased if they know the borrowing bylaw passed, because they had engineers on site last week. And I, yeah, I'm excited about it. I'm nervous about it a little bit, but I'm excited about it, too, so.
Do you want to talk a little bit of the redesign of the farm?
Oh, we're going, when they came out and looked at the geotech, I should have pulled it up, but we were going to use the very south portion of the industrial area and the two westerly lots on the south corner. So, now, it's the south corner plus one lot north, same amount of land. They just want to run it north-south. It was a better layout for them than running it east-west. So, it was going to be long-running east-west, and now it will be tall-running north-south.
So, is that next to where we did the exercise for the students there?
Further west.
Further west from there.
Yeah, quite a bit west than that.
South, that's, that was the south.
Correct. That's the south boundary, correct.
Right.
But all the way west, and one lot north.
Okay. Looks good to me.
Counselor Court? The security, the type of fencing we're going to have there.
Right. So, in the, in the project, we've priced chain link around it. We'll also have some barbed wire, because we don't want the cattle pushing up against chain link all the time, because that's expensive. So, it will be chain-linked and gated.
It'll look like a prison, then.
Essentially, yeah.
Solar prison, yeah.
We did, we did read of an instance, and this is a bit of an aside, where there's a huge solar farm up by Bow Island, and the owner got up one day, and one of his panels was gone. So, somebody went out, took tools, took machinery, took it down. So, this one is not adjacent to any road, first of all, so it's going to be out, and we're going to chain-link it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Camera.
Well, we're going to look at that, too, because obviously, we have electricity there.
Yeah.
So...
So, and not only will we have a basic road, but we're going to have also a few more cables and all sorts of electricity.
We have to extend the overhead power lines and transformers because of the amount of generation, and the peak generation at there, we don't have appropriate transformers to handle that coming back just yet. So, Leonard's got to do some work. He's already been talking with NMAX. He knows exactly what he needs. That's priced in, so NMAX is actually going to pay us back for that.
That's what I want to know.
It's all part of the-
Is what'll happen there. Well, they're pay us back, i.e. they're gonna lend us, it's in the financing.
It'll be part of the pay.
It's in the project.
All right, thank you so much, Jeff, for all that information. It has been a laborious search of information and trying to understand the whole process.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having done that on our behalf. It's, it's hopefully going to be what it's intended to be.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna stay up here, because I'd like to preface 6A when we get there as well.
That's where I was going to go. So first of all, I'd like to recognize the presence of Ryan Dick from Osk and Nolan Card from the town. As they are going to talk about the land use by law. And at this point, because it is an open document that we're really working on, if there are some issues that we need to address, it's a proper time to do that. Let's, let's bring as many as of the content we have and talk about them. I have at least one for sure that I would like to address while we have those gentlemen here. So Jeff, please go ahead.
So I just wanted to preface, we actually have a few, we're juggling a few balls in the air when it comes to the land use by law. So one of the things, I think there's a couple of things settled, but by all means, if they're not, let's talk about them again. One of them was the legislative requirements in the land use by law that needed to change. So those seemed to kind of go without saying. I didn't hear really any concern or opposition there, and I don't have any. The second is, we talked about some items that have come up over time, setbacks on sightline setbacks, those kind of things. I think those are reasonably settled. But one of the reasons why you as council didn't proceed with any readings of this is we ran into this home occupation controversy, we'll call it, at the same time this by law was open. And so you wanted to have some further discussion on the regulations around home occupations. And also, what I hope we can talk about tonight with both Nolan and Ryan here is that discretion of the MPC in interpreting the land use by law. And so we all have a little bit better understanding of where that is, and if we're all comfortable with it, that's perfect. But if we're not, now's the time, we can amend that. It gives us an opportunity to either tighten that up if you see a need for that or to amend some of those discretionary items of the MPC. So Ryan, obviously, he advises the MPC, so does Nolan, so I thought these were the right gentlemen to have in the room on that. And then final, I think after we have all this discussion, there's a rezoning request. And the only reason we lumped it in here is normally we charge a considerable fee because you have to reopen your land use by law to change the zoning, and you need a public hearing, and you have to do all this stuff. Well, potentially, you're about to open up the land use by law anyway, so we'll have some discussion about that at the time. So those are kind of the different areas that I've seen we've discussed. And I hope we can come to at least some advancement or conclusion on a couple more of them tonight.
All right, thank you.
Oh, sorry, there's one other thing, complicated even further. We have to conclude our South Saskatchewan Regional Plan Compliance as well.
Yeah.
So we have to tell the province that we are compliant with those plans, and Ryan will speak to that a little bit more. We feel, I don't know if we're 100% to the way there, Ryan, but we're really, really close. So he'll speak to that a little bit more too, and we'll need a resolution to council on that if we're comfortable.
Okay, so Ryan, please come to the podium. I don't know if Nolan's coming with you or how you intend to proceed.
I don't know. Whatever works best.
All right, so you proceed and then we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, and I may not be aware of everything that anyone wants to talk about, but it's my understanding that you've had a look at this. And as Jeff indicated, there's, there's no issues with the, with the changes that came from recent amendments to the Act, which was the main thrust for initiating this amendment. If you wanna talk about home occupations, I'm happy to try and do so. Generally speaking, I'm not sure exactly what we wanna talk about with home occupations.
So why don't we address things in maybe the orders of, first of all, the South Saskatchewan document to which our document needs to be in line with? Do you want to talk about this one and then give us a sense of what we will need to do as a council? And then we'll put this one to bed fairly quickly.
Okay, so the regional plan came out in 2014.
Yeah.
For those not familiar, a quick recap, it affects the majority of the area south of Calgary. There are eight regional planning areas in the province. This is the second one to be completed. When they, when the legislature adopted this thing, they said municipalities, all local government bodies have five years within which to amend any plans, policies. And important to note, it doesn't just affect your land use planning stuff. It, the wording they use is that it's applicable to anything that should be impacted by the regional plan.
Right.
And you have to file a statutory declaration by September 1st, 2019, stating that you're in compliance with the document. For some context, we, there's some communities in the Oriskiö region that have already done this, and they've simply got an email back from the Land Use Secretariat recognizing that they've done it and asking that they continue to act in compliance with the document. In reality, it seems to me that they are not looking at your documents. They're just asking you to do this and relying on your goodwill to comply with the plan.
Okay, so here is a question for you, Ryan, then. Our next council is September 2nd, so if I understand, we need to pass a motion today in order to be compliant.
And you, you really don't even need to pass a motion. What most municipalities we've been doing as planners has been, it's good to get this thing in front of council or the municipal planning commission, so there's record that there was some discussion about this, so that everyone's aware and that staff has the direction to do this. But it's-
Yes, but you need a motion to direct you-
We would like a motion. That's the process we've been recommending to municipalities.
Okay, all right. Okay, so councillor, at the end of this discussion, there will need to be a motion to direct Osk
Well-
to complete the-
It could say that you accept the presentation for information and support staff in undertaking the exercise of filing the statutory declaration, something like that.
Okay. Okay.
Do you wanna speak around where we're at as far as the thing with compliance?
Sure. And compliance is, it's very subjective, right? There's not much, especially in terms of land use planning, in terms of quantified targets. They are policy statements giving direction and guidance. When we did the MDP a few years ago, we talked a lot about these things. Increasing residential densities, redevelopment opportunities, providing a range of housing opportunities. A lot of the stuff is, is not so much action items, but it's more establishing a policy environment that, that provides for the opportunity for these outcomes to be realized. So again, it's, it's subjective in terms of, do you comply? I think it's fair to say that there's, there's nothing that I'm aware of that would preclude, that is contrary to this document. Could we continue to go further and do absolutely everything to try and work towards these objectives? Well, sure. But I think you're on very safe ground to, to make that declaration that you do comply.
Okay, so that, that is good. So councillor, anything else that you'd like to know regarding that? Councillor Bangry?
When I remember, when we first started going through this process, and the meetings all over the place. And I remember how many hunters and fishermen were really concerned about access to places like community pastures and those kind of things.
Yeah.
And I, I remember a sense that, that they were, like, the council reached and they were trying to shut it down and stuff like that. Where, where has this gone in regard to right here with our own community pasture here? Because there seems to me, there's still a sense out there that people are feeling that they're shut out from these places. Have they made any changes to allow for access for, for all trained vehicles?
Yeah, those are some of the, like, some of the, the issues that created controversy and you got some really passionate responses were mostly in the eastern slopes areas, the dedication of the castle park, off-highway vehicle access. Those were the big things, right? And there was one amendment to this document that you guys maybe recall, made in the Crowsness Pass a few years ago. And that, and that's what really roused a lot of people up. There were demonstrations and the whole kind of thing. None of that stuff really pertains to, especially to urban municipalities in the region, has little meaning. But, but there, there is some stuff still to come out of this, because it does set the stage for more detailed plans, resource management plans, biodiversity objectives. But again, as they pertain to an urban municipality, especially one that's not right up against the eastern slopes, I don't think there's any concerns for you guys.
Okay.
Well, some of the things we did in the by law, like, we made new zones for smaller lots to allow them, all this kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, we did stuff like that.
We still have all the people wanting the bigger lots, but we did make the by law comply by making all the smaller ones.
Yeah, I remember that.
To allow the smaller lots and the smaller-
West End?
Yeah. All right, so yet, if there are some landowner within those large lot, they want to, instead of having two parcel of land, maybe have a larger house rather than two small houses, that is still something that is doable?
We've already, Mayor, we've already done that with a development up there in the West End already. Did we not pass that by law, in the land use by law?
But it has to, to fit into the land use by law too.
Now, I recall too, Calgary had some issues with granny suites and, and having apartments above garages and stuff. And we were talking about our larger lots in town, whether people would be allowed to have that secondary suite in the garage. So does that still something that's part of this legislation that could happen?
It's still inside there.
We have allowed it in the larger lot areas.
Yeah.
In the by law, there is a-
There is a section there.
So it is allowable and it can happen.
We've done little things like that, like Nolan said, created some small lot districts allowing for detached accessory housing. We instituted the maximum lot size. I think all those things were stuff that came out of the efficient land use portion of the regional plan.
So let's address maybe the other more difficult area where we had to have an appeal regarding the house on the, on the east side of town. And who wanted to put a studio, a dance studio, but there was an appeal because there was issue with the traffic, the density, the number of house, car parked there. Do you want to help us a little bit? Because I would imagine that in your advice to the board, you considered many of the different issues like noise, traffic, et cetera. And yet the appeal board felt that it did not, it was not sufficiently addressed by, by the, the board that made the decision to begin with. So what can we learn from it?
Mayor, should we be discussing that situation?
Well, we need to understand how that fits within our, our land use by law. Shouldn't we try to see what constitute something that is considered as a business and more suitable in a business area, something that is within a residential area? And what can be allowed? What is it? For example, I can see another case in town where there is a property that has about 12 or 13 cars around on the streets, all licensed, fully licensed. But is that not constituting a business?
Well, a couple of things there, and like councillor Bangry I think noted, were this an active appeal, we wouldn't go about discussing it. But it's, there's been a decision and 30 days has elapsed, and that's the time within which someone can launch an appeal to the court of appeal. So it's, it's done. It's, there's no more action to be taken there. So we're fine to discuss it. Home occupations generally, for context, most urban municipalities allow for some form of home occupations. They're usually, sometimes they're thought of as provisions in order to incubate businesses. They'll start in the home, they'll move downtown or whatever, or they're just gonna be small innocuous type office uses and such, right? And, and for more context, most places set out their land use by laws. Like, what you guys have are home occupation one, home occupation two, two categories. The, the home occupation one is just the office use with basically no impact. You, you probably wouldn't know it was there if you lived across the street. And the home occupation two is, is a little more intensive, more customer visits or, you know, any of these standards that we have laid out here. If it doesn't, if it exceeds the threshold in one, it has to be a two. So you set it out as permitted use, a permitted use is a home occupation one, and a discretionary use is a home occupation two in most of the residential districts, and that's typical. So I think saying all this, what I'm trying to say is your land use by law is, is pretty typical with what we see in the region. I think what it comes down to, and like you said, the MPC approved it, appeal board overturned it and refused it. I mean, each, each one of these, these boards, it's human beings on the board. They're gonna come up with, draw different conclusions from different findings. And unless you go about quantifying everything, reducing it to numbers in a by law, there's gonna be subjectivity. And you're gonna get those people drawing different conclusions, and a different board might have came up with something different on a different day. And that, that's just how it goes.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
One of the things that happened at the appeal that kind of surprised everybody was Jody came in and said, "If my neighbors don't want this, I'm not gonna do it." So that made a little bit of an impact on the board. Plus, she was, came in totally unprepared. She had no numbers of how many people were gonna come, how many dance classes she was gonna have, nothing. Yet the applicants had 120 cars showing up in four hours, because they were calculating it by classes that she had at the downtown business. She stated she wasn't gonna do that, but yet they had a really good presentation, a lot of numbers. The board looks at it by that way. They don't look at it like the MPC does as, well, this is a business that plays something, gives something to the town. They just look at it as the numbers. And Jody had no rebuttal for any of those numbers. So the board couldn't do anything but-
Therefore, the subjectivity that you're speaking of.
Yeah, and I mean, you appoint people to be on these boards and you rely on their discretion. And can, can you do much more? I'm not sure that it's, that you could, or if it's necessary in this case.
Councillor Court, Councillor Drew?
That was one of the concerns from the people that were appealing this, was how much discretion does an MPC board have?
Right.
That's something we might need to address, how much discretion do we actually have to move on these things? I mean, we're on the MPC board, so we, we sit on it, but do we need to tighten up the amount of discretionary leeway we have? Or we need to leave it the way it is?
I was going to say, along the same lines, it's that discretion piece that may or may not get us in trouble. But there's also an appeal process, so that if it isn't the right decision, then the appeal process can happen. And I think there's checks and balances there.
But having said that, this is the first time in probably seven years I've been on the MPC that there's been an appeal. It doesn't happen often.
But the, the appeal had to do really essentially around the traffic around the neighborhood. That was what was disturbing the people more than anything else. It was not the fact there was a studio, it was a fact that it would be so much increased traffic, car parking, lack of adequate parking. That was really the issue that was bothering the neighbors.
Yeah, I was just gonna say something similar to councillor Court. And I've been on the MPC for quite a while too, and, and we've never had it before. And so the fact that we have an appeal board, they, they made their decision. We may not have liked that, you know, because we had a decision that we had made, but the appeal board made it. And I talked to Jody afterwards about it, and things actually worked out in her favor. She got, she's keeping, staying where she is. She's got her brother there who's helping out. She's happy now. I had a good visit with her, and so, I mean, it worked out okay in the end.
Councillor Bangry?
So Ryan, as you look at our, our bylaws concerning land use, are our zoning bylaws fitting our land use bylaws? Are they working together, or do we need to do work on those?
No, I, I think they're working. I mean, the zoning is established- No, I, I think they're working. I mean, the zoning is, is established by way of the land use bylaw, and the districts, I, I think, I think they're doing their job. I think the use allocation for each district, we, we took a lot of time when, when we did this bylaw, and I think it's been working pretty well.
Jeff?
Mind if I just speak from here?
No, please.
I think one of the things that Ryan touched on, that as I watched that whole incident unfold, is some of you were not as comfortable with the level of discretion at the MPC, and not because you don't trust the people at the MPC. I, I've, I've made this comment before, that the collective wisdom around the table, whether it's you or another seven people, is probably fairly equal. But you have the discretion, and I'm not suggesting you do it, but you have the discretion to really tighten up what those parameters are. So, for example, let's talk about the vehicles. You can have in your bylaw that if it is anticipated that there is more than X vehicles per day, it is simply prohibited. That's it, period. And the MPC does not have discretion anymore.
Yeah.
That's just a hard, fast rule.
Maybe that could be amendment to it.
Now, the question is, is I can't tell you every circumstance where that applies well or doesn't apply. I don't know. I'm not sure. But that was kind of the sticking point in this one, was the traffic, right? And so, if the MPC had a rule that said, "No, it's this," and that you don't have discretion to approve it otherwise, we're sorry. I don't know what the appeal, I guess it's, then they would appeal that they were declined at the MPC, is what would happen. The appeal board would still have to convene them for the opposite reason. And I don't know, Ryan, maybe you could speak to this. If, let's take a scenario where council said, "If there are more than three trips per day to a residence, it cannot be a home occupation two." Let, let's just say, I'm pulling a number. And so, we declined an applicant because they were going to have eight. So, we say, "No, you're, you're declined," and they appeal. Does the appeal board have the discretion to approve it?
Well...
If the bylaw prohibits it?
So, there's, there's, to break that down, so the way most land use bylaws are set up in the region is that you, any measurable standard can be waived. Anything with a number attached to it can be waived by the approving authority, usually not the development officer, usually municipal planning commission, assuming it's set up with that same two-tier thing that you have. So, anything like that can be waived. And say the, if the appeal, or sorry, if the MPC provided a waiver, the, and it was appealed, the SD, SDAB could uphold it, or they could say, "Well, this, this waiver is unreasonable," and they could refuse it on those same grounds. However, if you write it in to say the use definition, a home occupation two is defined as something that doesn't generate more than four vehicle trips, the approval authority cannot waive use. So, you can write it in, in a hard and fast way, like Jeff said, where it cannot be waived, and the appeal board is still bound by use, just like the original approval authority, so it could not be waived.
Okay, so use it, so, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mayor.
No, I, I just was thinking that, that clarifies things. But for me, for example, an individual that has 12 cars parked around its home, but not on, on the front of his home, but all along the street and wherever, licensed, how do we deal with that? How do the neighbor deal with that?
That's not associated with the development, to someone that has a lot of cars?
Somebody that might be puttering around, fixing that, fixing the other, enjoying, enjoying really repairing or upgrading or whatever, but does not have a proper...
Compound.
Compound for, for his vehicles that are licensed.
Well, you, you could, you could, as a, as a body, come to the determination and, and say that what you're doing constitutes a home occupation or some kind of pursuit that we feel requires a development permit. A little tougher when it's not part of a proper business, right? If it's just someone with a lot of cars, if they're not doing it in the pursuit of profit. It's, you get into some things that wouldn't typically be dealt with in a land use bylaw, might be dealt with better in a traffic safety bylaw or something like that, but...
Traffic and safety bylaw.
Or whatever, your streets bylaw, I'm not sure what you call it, but, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Court, Counselor Bantry, Counselor Barnes?
Clarification, if we're talking numbers, like you said, for businesses, if it's in a bylaw, then it doesn't come to MPC. It's there, it's a law.
Already there, yeah.
So, we don't, we don't see that kind of stuff at all. So, if you're talking the number of vehicles, you can't have more than so many. If it's in a bylaw, then we wouldn't see it. It would be up to the bylaw enforcement officer to take care of that, correct?
The bylaw enforcement officer would have to let that take care of it. If you're going to have more than four vehicles, they can't.
Yeah, so, so this kind of stuff wouldn't come to us.
That would be you.
Well, you had a couple of counts.
Counselor Bantry, Counselor Barnes, and Jeff?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, all right.
Ryan, how do we handle environmental issues? When we talk about automotive industry and things like that, there's a lot of environmental issues that, that deal with that.
Oil, gas, leaks.
Yeah, and so, do we have to have environmental situations rolled into our land use bylaw?
Well, I, I think it's part of the scope of, of the approval authorities is their consideration when they're looking at any type of development permit situation, if there's an environmental impact, that they need to understand it at least to some degree, which may require the submission of a report or findings prior to a decision being made. If you have, if you're dealing with something specific on a consistent basis, then we may want to write in specific provisions. But if we're just thinking that we need to have regard for environmental type issues, then, then I think we're okay with what we have in here.
Okay.
Our utility bylaw does deal with stuff going into the sewer and that type of stuff that they can't put in there, and if they get caught putting it in, there is a buy-in thing that they got to go through.
Jeff?
I just, I guess maybe I want to push back on, on a concept for a second, Ryan, or just help me understand it a little better. This notion that the numbers in the land use bylaw can be waived seems to, to be opposite of having numbers in a bylaw.
Exactly.
Right? So, I'm struggling with this notion that council sets numbers in a bylaw and then says any of the numbers in the bylaw can be at the discretion of the MPC, because the, the reason they're there is to provide these boundaries, right?
Yeah.
And so, I can see that there are certain numbers where, and Nolan, I think you have some percentage discretion in some things that you can just handle as a development officer. So, if a, a deck is just this much over, it does need to go to MPC for, you know, three inches.
Or a wheelchair ramp.
Yeah, yeah, or a ramp comes out so much. That's fine. I don't mind that because it's expressly discretionary.
Right.
But I, I'm struggling with this notion of having numbers in a bylaw and then saying, "We give you discretion over all the numbers in the bylaw." I, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but Ryan, just so it's understood how that's intended to be applied a little better.
Yeah, like I said, you have, most land use bylaws in the Orsko region are set up so that not the development officer, but the municipal planning commission, a collective body, not just one person, can come together and make, come to a finding that, okay, we've reviewed this situation, and we feel it's okay to waive it to some degree, maybe waive it completely. So, they have omnibus or complete author, variance power, call it. Now, you can, you can limit variance power to whatever degree you want. Say, you could say, "Okay, we, we give the municipal planning commission the ability to waive up to fif, not to exceed 50% of any measurable standard," something like that, right? I think what you'll find, though, is in order to keep this thing relatively concise, is that, once, once you start limiting that variance power, you will inevitably come up with these scenarios, "Oh, shoot, this, this is a situation that appears logical, doesn't fit in the bylaw, we technically can't waive it."
What's the recourse of the applicant at that point?
Well, you have to amend the land use bylaw, public hearing, three readings of a bylaw, notice in the newspaper. I remember when I worked for the city of Medicine Hat, there was a, a previous iteration of the land use bylaw where the council of the day wanted to really tighten it up, only to change it years after the fact when they found that we just kept coming across these things we couldn't foresee that, that needed variances. So, unless you go through the exhaustive undertaking of trying to foresee every situation and write this thing, you just, you'll come up with these things where you need these variances.
Okay.
But, but having said that, if there's something you know that you don't want the MPC or the development officer waiving, then you can certainly address an individual situation like that.
All right. So, for example, in the case of that studio, dance studio, after the fact, the neighbors went together and wrote letter of support against the, the decision of the MPC. Is it something then that we should really try to think about when you have somebody that comes to make a proposal, is asking them, "Have you consulted with your neighbor to see how they feel?" Because I think if that had been done before that, the result would have been exactly the same. There would not have been any further movement because when she found out that all the neighbors were against it, she felt it was not worth losing friendships.
Yeah. I don't know what happened in that particular case, but generally when we get this kind of stuff going, there's, he's already canvassed all the neighbors around there. I, I wasn't here for that particular meeting, so I don't know what happened as far as the neighbors and Nolan talking to them, I don't know.
We got letters from a lot of the neighbors.
But generally, we already know beforehand how the, how the neighbors feel.
I, I always, when I speak to people, whether it's about a rezoning, subdivision, what have you, I always try and remind people, you know, it's in your, probably in your best interest. You might save some money if you go talk to the, talk to these people, right?
But what's...
And it seems like a common sense thing. But to write some of these common sense things into a, into a bylaw, how do you measure then if they've done it correctly? What, how do they show a record of it?
All right.
We'll, we'll never get the common sense bylaw perfectly right.
So, essentially, you feel comfortable that the bylaw, the way it's written is, is, the land use bylaw is written at a level that is appropriate for municipality?
For, for home occupations, yeah, I think so, especially judging the, based on the number of home occupation applications we're getting, which is not that many.
Right.
I think you're probably better served to keep it a little more open and flexible, otherwise you might preclude something that you maybe would like to approve by getting too specific.
Okay.
That's the approach that I've had in mind when we wrote the, this schedule.
So, Counselor Barnes, Counselor Court, are you feeling all right with that?
I'm happy with the way it's been going. We get an appeal once every 10 years, and it doesn't go our way. I'm not going to sleep...
I mean, it's, we don't win them all, do we?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it because, like you say, we, it doesn't happen very often. But one thing I, I feel concerned with is when you do have a home occupation that, maybe it's a repair person that's got a, you know, a, who wants to repair vehicles temporarily, right? He wants to repair, I should say, he wants to repair vehicles. When it comes to the numbers of vehicles that he's going to have on a, on a street in any residential area, he's going to come, and if we don't have a specified number there, and like you said, we have to sometimes allow variances on that. But when it comes to variances, my concern is that if you give him that variance over a long period of time, he's going to, instead of having four vehicles, it's going to be eight vehicles, and then it's going to be 10. So, I would suggest that maybe somewhere in there, we have a number that's four, and if we do allow a variance, it's only for, it's for a specific time period, as opposed to open ending it and letting him keep it there for a long time. And I, that's the only thing I can, I can see.
Okay. Wait, we might need to talk about that one.
If you look at our land use bylaw, there's some general standards
Yeah.
in the backend of them, and it gives a lot of discretion to our, our development officer and parameters that he can work or she can work with. And I, I've read them over, and they're, they're very good, and they cover that kind of stuff, you know, so that Nolan can look at the general standards and say, "Yeah, this can be allowed. He has the discretion to do that." So, I, I think those general standards need to be looked at, maybe changed in some cases, but all in all, they're pretty darn good.
Counselor Selig? Counselor Brown?
When it comes to the whole variance notion, we have two counselors sitting on the municipal planning commission. If you reach a level of discomfort with the variance that they're asking for, you don't need to make a decision right then. You can step back from the whole thing, table it, and do some more research, and then go back and give your decision. So, I would say common sense would abide.
That's a good idea.
That is a good point, because sometimes we go through those meetings way too quickly.
Exactly.
Sometimes we need to step back and look better.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
I was just going to say, and as far as, do we not have the right that when, that, if we're talking about the man with all the vehicles, when he comes to the town to get a business license, is that not something we can talk about? We will give you this business license.
Absolutely.
Perfect. It's awesome. But you're only allowed to have whatever vehicles on the property, and then it's up to the landowners around them, the homeowners. If I have a problem with that, I would then talk to you. Is that right, Nolan? I would come and talk to you and say, "You know what? Joe Blow has 14 for the love vehicles and parked in front of his house. That's not okay." And then, we could proceed with it. Is that not how it works? Exactly.
But that, and that would take pace, take place through a development permit process, though, a formal process, right?
Right. But we still have that option.
Yeah, you say, "We're not giving you a business license. You need a development permit prior to getting..."
Right, right.
The tricky thing is when you're dealing with licensed vehicles too, right? If these are just unlicensed vehicles, that's a little, but when they're licensed, then there's provincial legislation, the Motor Vehicles Act
Right.
and all the stuff, and you can readily move them. And so, it becomes a little more complicated.
Has to move them an inch a day, actually, is what it is.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
So, Counselor Brown, just to add to that conversation, you have in your premises that this gentleman is running a business.
Right.
But that is not the case.
Personal hobby.
That is not the case. So, there is no business license here.
No traffic.
That is where the issue is.
Tricky.
Right.
So, can I ask a question? Ryan, what are other communities doing when it comes to a, a person who has, you know, he's got him and his wife in there, maybe a child, but he's got them, an excess of vehicles? What do they do? Do they limit the number of vehicles that they're allowed to have on the premises or on the street confined within their own, you know, lots, frontage?
You know, I'm not an expert on that. I think pulling the community peace officers are probably a better way to start. I, I know it's a tricky subject, and I, we do hear about it from time to time, and some of them attempt to deal with it in a community standards bylaw, or like we said earlier, the traffic safety bylaw. But again, when there are licensed vehicles on the street, I, I'm not sure. Not, not in the land use bylaw, I'll tell you that much, yeah.
No, it's interesting. That was a question we wanted to know, is it considered home occupancy too? Because it's now acting as a business, even if it is for its own pleasure and benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's such a gray area.
If, if you want to expand the definition of what constitutes a home occupation, so to capture some of these hobbyists and, you know, storage type people, we could potentially do that. The difference with, if you put something in a land use bylaw and then facilitate a development permit process, then there's an appeal process, right?
Right.
Whereas in a lot of your other bylaws, there won't be a prepared appeal process. So, you may have the ability to do things more readily and without the burden of that appeal process and the time and cost.
Okay. Well, let's clarify a few things for us. Jeff?
I don't ask this question to open a can of worms, but it comes up from time to time, and I think Ryan's opinion on this would be valuable. We've had conversation over the last couple of years from time to time about council being the MPC.
Right.
So, if we want that, and now I have a personal opinion on that, by the way, I'll reserve it for a minute. And there's sometimes, you, you'll hear arguments for and against this notion, and I'm curious from Ryan, you and I haven't discussed this at length, but what do you see in the Orsko region, and do you have any pros or cons to that model?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give you a few scenarios here. And what we typically see with the rural municipalities, for whatever reason, probably historical, because once you give the body that, that power, that they don't want to relinquish it, is that the rural municipalities, the councils will act as municipal planning commission. So, they'll deal with discretionary use permits, permits requiring waivers, same as your MPC does, and they'll deal with subdivisions. So, you, you'll, on a seven, seven-member council like Carson County, for example, you'll get six people, then you'll have one of their counselors on the appeal board. And that seems to be the norm in our region, save for, there's even a different scenario. Lethbridge County, for example, doesn't have a municipal planning commission. Staff deals with both permitted and discretionary. So, that's altogether different. Most of the urban municipalities... Most of the urban municipalities in the region do things the same way you do with a with a municipal planning commission in addition to a development officer that consists of between three to seven people and usually two, sometimes three members of council. So there's there's a variety of different setups there. There are no municipalities that I'm aware of, urban municipalities where the council sits as the development authority. Doing so is something you could certainly do. One thing you need to remember and because council, you're you're making legislative decisions, right? You're you're politicians. The municipal planning commission and councillors need to remember this, when they sit on the MPC, they wear a different hat. You're making administrative type decisions that should be insulated from political pressures, and you need to be thinking a bit differently, just concerning yourself with the land use bylaw and the merits of an application. And I think that's why you usually see a committee like a commission established. So there's that separation from council, and maybe by way of that, there's some insulation from political pressures, they're maybe maybe able to make more objective decisions. So that that's that's one thing that comes to mind.
Thank you. Any other question for Ryan? No. Ryan, thank you very much. So council, if I remember, we still need to come out of here with a motion to Jeff.
So a couple of things, council, for today. One is we I would request a resolution to direct administration to proceed with compliance reporting. But the other thing is, is you may want to, if you think you're prepared, to pass first reading on the bylaw amendment so that we can schedule a public hearing, because that is mandatory.
Okay.
So then we can schedule and advertise that for, say, second week of September, something like that, and get sufficient notice out. So those are, again, only if you're prepared on the land use bylaw to do first reading. But upon that, we'd schedule a public hearing and compliance. And I think that would take we'll talk about the rezoning in a minute. So those are the two things I'd request of council if you feel appropriate to do so.
All right. So I think we should go, first of all, with the compliance issue with South Saskatchewan based on the land use document legislation that we have to honor and be compliant with. So who is going to do that?
I move to approve the the compliance for the South Saskatchewan regional plan as we've discussed.
So you're accepting the presentation directing staff-
Yep.
-to carry on with your compliance. Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, this one is done. Council, do you feel comfortable doing the first reading? The first reading, as you say, does not bind you. Yes.
I'll make a motion to have first reading of our what what are we looking at?
Land use bylaw.
Land use bylaw.
Sixteen forty seven.
D. So it's a land use bylaw.
Question?
Go ahead, councillor.
In regards to the suggestion that we have a an appeal board that's not really made up of local people, where is that going in regards to this bylaw?
Go ahead.
So we've agreed to, and we use it with this appeal.
We have a regional-
We're a member of the regional appeal board managed by ORSC.
Okay.
So that's that's done.
So we're going to stay as we are then? Is that what we're doing?
Well, that's your discretion, but I would recommend such, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all I want to know. I'm I'm good with that.
We have advertised to get local residents to be on the board. I've had one application that came in. Just waiting to see if there are any more. We'd like to get three.
Get them trained, yeah.
And then they could all go for three at the same time, and then we could have our own appeal board.
Okay, that's good. Now, another question, councillor. Ryan was saying that we could have two or three members of council on the MPC board. Do we need to increase the number of two councillors or not?
I don't think so.
I don't want to be the majority.
But-
Yeah.
Because otherwise, why would those other people be bothering to come on the board?
Yeah, that's a little bit of the issue.
I was just saying, my experience on the MPC is that it's been pretty level headed with the with our volunteer ad hoc people.
All right.
So I'd like to leave it as it is.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the table. All in favor? Thank you very much. Administration can now start to publicize the public hearing. Thank you very much. Ryan, thank you. It's always a pleasure to have you with us.
Hey, you bet.
And we always have questions for you, and you help us understand things a little bit better. Thank you. So you you're welcome to stay. I see that Joseph is there. Joseph?
We handled the rezoning well, Nolan.
That's what I was wondering. Would you be okay if we take a little bit more time? Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Okay. So here we have six eight two rezoning request, and we have a councillor that may want to excuse himself. Councillor Selig also does not have a peculiar problem regarding what we're going to discuss. I still feel that it's best for him not to be in a room. So thank you so much, councillor. So the reasoning request, as you could see it, is regarding a parcel of land that is on the west side that is right now designated for two large duplex kind of use. But the owner of that parcel of land wishes to have one large home on that property. So essentially, what he's asking is really for variance or changes in the use.
Mayor, but my what he's asking for here is in our land use bylaw, that is zoned as R4.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to rezone it.
You would effectively have to grant a rezoning to allow him to put a single family residence on that property.
All right. So it's an R4, and it should be zone R1.
That's the request. I'm not saying it's what it should be. I'm just saying that's the request.
But that's where what we're looking at, right? R4, which would create a duplex kind of situation?
Which it is currently, yeah.
An R1, which would be one large home.
Correct.
Okay. Councillor Coates, councillor Barnes, go ahead.
Did the developer, was he the one that originally put them that way? The duplex lots, the single lots?
Yes, correct. That's how they were originally, well, I shouldn't even say originally subdivided. That'd be false because they changed a little bit in the early stages, but that was the final development plan.
And so the town has inherited that. Is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay, so that was the person that owned the land before that person purchased the land that had that set up for duplex.
So there are duplex lots scattered throughout that development.
Okay, all right. I get you. Councillor Barnes?
I I was just going to say, some time ago, a lot up on Third Avenue West and about Sixth Street, they had two small-
Yeah.
-properties that were purchased and tore down the houses and built one big lot. And so I I mean, it's a discretionary use. It has been done. And with that golf course development, I personally, I don't see a problem with it because I know the the original plan was to have larger lots there to do those type of things.
Yeah, it's an area for large lot.
And there is, I know, right as you just go in there, there's only about three or four houses in, there is a duplex there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't have a problem with this myself.
Councillor Bantry, just give councillor Bantry a chance.
I would like to hear from our development officer, how he feels about it. And because he's probably seen the drawings and everything else.
I can make a mention while we're waiting for him.
Go ahead.
People get around us by just buying a single lot. My neighbor down the block, he wanted a bigger yard, so he bought yards, he bought the lot next to it.
Next to him.
It takes it out of circulation, won't be a house built there until they die. I don't see a huge difference to this, except they may put the house right in the middle so you can't build both lots.
I think that's what he's going with you.
So people do get around this by hook or by-
Okay. Personally, I don't have an issue with the request.
No.
Nolan, would you like to talk to them?
After I tried to get a hold of Matt Sherwood, and I couldn't get a hold of him by the time I wrote the letter to Jeff, but he did call me later, and they stated that they were fine with it being rezoned. And so what what would happen is they would have to rezone the two lots, and then Ron Johnson would own both the lots, and he would himself do consolidation, which we would not have any control over.
All right.
And consolidate the lot again. So Sherwood said that they were fine with that. They would still make sure they had their architecture controls all done and all that kind of stuff, and-
Okay. So that's one piece of the puzzle we needed to kind of know.
Yeah.
Thank you. So the former developer doesn't have an issue?
I was I was just talking to Ryan and Nolan about how we approach this, because normally we would charge a $500 fee because you are reopening your land use bylaw. Now you require a number of processes. And in this case, where we're already, you just passed first reading and having a public hearing on the land use bylaw, we can essentially, we're not doing any more than we would. But just talking with Ryan and Nolan, what we're thinking about is normally if we had a zoning change request, we would not open the entire land use bylaw. We'd do an amendment to it. We'd just do an amendment that stood on its own. We were talking about still, if council is looking favorably at accommodating this, we'll simply do another amendment, probably so it stands alone and it's not just lumped in with everything we've talked about for weeks and weeks on the land use bylaw, just so it's clear.
Okay.
And so I don't really need a resolution on it as long as there's some feeling that you would entertain this bylaw amendment when it came to council next time.
I believe there is probably consensus here.
Okay. Anything else you want on that, Nolan?
Okay.
No, he you don't need a motion on it.
I don't I don't think so because I didn't prepare a bylaw for you to pass a reading on, for example.
For sort of a straw vote.
All right.
If it looks good, we'll prepare an amendment.
I'm good with it.
You're good with it, councillor? You're good with it?
Is there-
I'm good with it, but I still think that the $500 should apply.
Well, you need to have some debate about that. That's the next question I was going to ask. And actually, I'd like a resolution on that.
That. Okay. So that's what I was wondering. So essentially, right now, what we are prepared to do is do an amendment to the land use bylaw. So does it still require, does it still require the $500 while we're discussing that?
So so my question in answering with the mayor with what she said is, I don't feel like we need to charge the $500. The timing of it, we've got it open, we're doing amendments, we're fixing things. Why would we charge this extra $500?
Because that's what it prescribes, right? That's the only reason I could give you.
When the land use bylaw is closed.
Right.
Correct.
But it's open right now as we are working on it.
So we would have your public hearings at the same date.
Right.
We would have, like, the process will simply be almost merged together.
So I would I would vote that we do not charge the extra $500. I don't feel good about that.
Jeff, the developer of that area.
Yeah.
Were they not charged $500 already?
No.
Well, they they would have at one point done like a a wholesale zoning change.
The plan.
They did have the subdivision time. They set all these lots and all the zoning at the same time, so they paid the subdivision fee.
Right.
Oh, it was already in the, well, okay. I'm fine with that, too. If he's already paid it, no sense in double dipping.
So, all right. So councillor, do how do you feel about the $500?
I don't think it needs to happen if it's open.
Yeah, me neither.
I've seen my thought on it.
So can we make a? No, he asked for a resolution.
Hold on, hold on. Anything else we should know?
Yeah, Ryan brought up a good point. One of the subtleties of this is we do incur some costs, is we have to put a map in the paper and mail out all the adjacent landowners.
Oh.
So we do incur some costs, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable waiving portions of the fee. Like, that seems even a little more odd.
What would be the cost?
But, well, a couple hundred bucks, probably.
Then we should probably charge them those costs.
I think that's why we charge them the $500, because to-
It's covering those administrative-
We probably spend that kind of money or more.
Give me a second. Yeah. Councillor Bantry?
Mayor, our our bylaw is still open. The $500, as far as I'm concerned, does not apply at this point in time because it has not. So I am I am ready to propose that we go ahead and do not charge the $500.
Okay. So you heard just right now that there are costs-
So what?
-associated to to doing that.
But the money was paid.
So are you still feeling comfortable?
I might change my- I still think we need to charge some of the costs. We got to cover our costs. We we can't keep on giving away things when we have to pay.
We're not giving away. We're not giving away.
Yes, we are. If we are incurring costs, we are giving away money.
But you said we keep giving away. I don't think we keep giving away anything.
No, I'm that's not what I mean. If we have costs involved.
Okay, just a second. Councillor Coates?
I agree with councillor Barnes.
Okay, so right now-
There's expenses being incurred, so.
Right now, there are costs being incurred, and that's something we didn't think about quite before we started our discussion. And you have a point, councillor. When you incur costs, the one incurring the cost should pay for it. It's true. Jeff, do you have something else you wanted to add?
I had to pay a development permit to build a cabin.
So, I mean, it would be 200 or whatever that is instead of five, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, you're talking about-
Well, we're just taking a quick guess at it, but yeah, it's-
We're just guessing what the ads and the paperwork costs.
Yeah, what the paper costs.
So what are what do you think in the cost are going to be?
I don't know what that cost is.
I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to look at it.
All right. So you could make the motion to cover the recoup the costs.
But if we've already set $500 as a cost, and we start nickeling it down for everybody that comes along and says it only costs this much, I think we need to stick with $500 instead of-
Councillor Coates, the reason is that when you reopen the bylaw, you have a lot more people who need to be involved, time, staff, et cetera. It's a little bit different here, but if you want $500, it's fine with me.
So I have no problem with with-
Recouping.
Recouping the cost. And and if it is $500, great, but if it is $200, can we not just say we want to recoup